Today is Monday, August the 18th, 2025, and it is 1:30 PM. Let the record show that all council members are present. Are there any public comments at this time? No public comments, we'll go to our consent agenda. Discuss, consider Resolution 25-08-03R. A resolution calling an election for the November 4th, 2025 general election. This is Goal 5, promote open and consistent communication when you live on City Secretary.
Mayor and Council, on your desk you'll find a printout of the same resolution that was presented to you on Thursday. We have brought the item back since there has been a request to further discuss Proposition 2, which is the amendment to the Charter for the Council Compensation. I have also printed out for you some research that I, that we have completed as a team from surrounding cities, and it includes their budget, their population, their pay for their council and their mayor. We also added some notes, if we could, if we were able to find anything special, we also added those as notes. We also have the Proposition Number 1, which is the sales street maintenance tax that we are reauthorizing.
Okay, I'll start. I did a spreadsheet, y'all will all have a copy of it. What I did is I took the pay that the council members are getting now, and I just did per inflation for the last 25 years at .53%. Came up with at the end would be $1,748.62. Then I actually got the actual percentages that IRS allowed for cost of living increases for the last 25 years. That's the next column, which it comes out to be $1,837.23. And then I just said, if we just did a 5% increase per year for the last 25 years, where would we be? And that's the $3,096.10. To get to the 12,000 that is proposed in the proposition, we'd have to have an 11.1% cost of living increase every year for the last 25 years, which I don't think anybody that runs any type of business is going to give their employees an 11% increase every single year. So I think the 12,000 is out of it, the picture personally. I did the same thing for the mayor pay at the 175. At the regular inflation rate, it would be 3,825. At the IRS, cost of living increase would be 4,018. And at 5% would be $6,772. And then at the 11%, it's just, that's, but to give to 15%, that's proposed on the proposition, it would be an 8.58%, which is still unrealistic. So I think that it needs to be somewhere between a 3% to 5% increase over the last 25 years to give us a starting, a starting point.
So this, this is going to keep going up in percentage, I would assume?
Depends on how we write the proposition. Is that right?
Yeah, the proposition is going to be determined if it's formula based, or we don't have to bring it back to the Charter every time that we build something in there that was a formula. So that it's a one and done, unless at some point in time it's deep that it hasn't increased enough or it's increased too much. The only other thing that I would ask, ask for you all, that you would consider putting in there.
I think we have to budget it, but I mean, if we're not being, we have to look at the long period. And I'm hoping and praying that the economy stays good for at least 10 years. But if there's a big downturn, and it could be prohibitive, is there a caveat that you could say, okay, for a one-year period, we're going to reduce it to meet budget constraints? I honestly do not think that's ever going to happen with everything that we have going on economically and as far as economic development here. But I think it would probably be prudent to put something in there to say as long as the budget can maintain it. And that's going to be at the discretion of council. Going up, no problem. But I think council should be able to set it at something less if it's going to be a slow year from a budget standpoint.
Agreed.
I think this is good, but it doesn't take in another stuff like workload. You know, things have really picked up around here quite a bit. And we've gone from a non-all-town to an all-town. So the inflation rate is probably going to get higher. It would be across the country as a whole.
That's reasonable, it's 5%.
So I'd like to look at the workload and the fact that, you know, things have gone quite a bit.
For several years, we've been at the same, the council has been at the same pay for several years. So it has never been looked at as a consideration because just looking at the proposition, how it was set up for $1,200 a year. That was, I was looking at the, at the deal that Cindy, I mean that Wendy sent us. I was looking how it was set up for the year, $1,200 a year for, but this is not the year 2000. It sure is not the year 2017, 2025. And we've got a lot of stuff going on, a lot of stuff taken care of. So I think, and I just don't think, I believe that we, it's time to, to, just like everything else here in the community, we need to, we need to meet where inflation, everything has gone up except the same, the pay for the council. And then not, not only that, but the stuff that we have to deal with nowadays. And we're trying to take care of a town that have was let go for a long time, a long time. We're trying to fix stuff that should have never been in acquisition right now. And, and there's nobody to blame, it's just the way, it's, that town was dying. I left in 1976, and this town was nice. I came back in 2010, and this town looked like a piece of junk because it wasn't taken care of. And that, and that's, and I hate to be like that, but I come from, I, I was born and raised here, and I saw what was here back in the 70s and 80s, 60s, 70s and 80s. Had plenty of stores, had plenty, plenty of, not only lumberyard, we had, we had life. We didn't have to go to Odessa. I never went to Odessa until I was probably 17, 16. I never went to Odessa, I didn't have to go to Odessa. We had everything here in town. But it takes the leadership of the town to make the town come to life in, and working with the community. But when we, the, the leadership of the town lets things go by, making deals, backdoor deals, I'll cover you if you cover me, and, and I can say that, you know, I can't have no proof of that. But I've heard enough of, oh, they cut me a deal here and a deal there, that, that doesn't work. Now we're trying to, to take back our town the way it is, and we're fighting because they don't want to change. They got used to the, the leeway of having things done like that. But, and, and with a council, with what we have to deal with, I think, I think, I ran, I ran not because to get rich with a council because at $40, I mean, we got, and there's no special privileges for us. The community may think that we get special privileges because we're council people, we're not. The only thing that, that it's a headache, to me it's a headache when I have to deal with people that don't understand what, what we're trying to do in this town. And, but we can't stop because the boss already rolled in and we can't stop. But I think the council, for everything that we have to do, I think the council deserves to be paid better than they were 25 years ago, or 20 years ago, however, when things weren't where, where it is today. Because this is an active council. This council takes calls. This council goes out there and talks to people that other people didn't want to talk to. So that's just my spiel.
Comrade, I don't think you can blame it anybody, because I moved here in the 80s. And the oil, the oil mill closed, the oil mill closed, and the oil field was down and rock bottom. And that's nobody's fault.
No, but I agree.
And I didn't, I wasn't responsible for any of that, so we'll make that clear. But anyway, it's, if it wasn't for the oil and gas, we wouldn't be in this position right now. It's not leadership necessarily, it's not somebody who's smart and did all this, it's, it's just luck. You know, it's, off, off field, we had a lot of oil here, and we didn't know about it back then. But, but yeah, the workload has definitely been pretty.
I don't know what's going to be a fair amount, but we're here to discuss.
What's your name?
Kathy.
Kathy?
Kathy.
Kathy, okay. I'll give you my transcript here in a bit, so you won't confuse what we're saying sometimes, you know? I don't want him to take what I said and put under his name. But Mayor, I'd like to thank you for the work that you put into this and, you know, everyone that contributed. But realistically, to take the words out of Randy's mouth, this is a different type of town. And what I mean by that is, this was a town with no revenue at one point, and then all of a sudden, we started getting revenue. Yet, what I don't understand is why we're always comparing ourselves to other towns. Pecos is a different town itself with different goals in mind and the future. So that was proven a while back when I researched some permits because when I went doing my own research, there was people I had to date for 20 years. So I really don't like to compare myself to other cities. We're not hesitant in approving, approving the use of tax dollars when it comes to these high-dollar consultants and contractors for their services. Yet, we're hesitant to take a chance on ourselves. And I mean, like, kind of what Conrad said, this is a council on the move, an active council. And we're setting the tone for the future, of future leaders that make this position more attractive to get a diverse pool of people. So we're setting the standards for the future, like I said, for the candidates. And when our terms all said and done, the salary increase, it helps attract more of a diverse pool of leadership to this community. And it also encourages a full dedication of roles and responsibilities for the accountability of a city official. So not only are you now accountable, you now have something to look forward to. The days of $40 meetings and a free meal, they're over because that doesn't motivate me, it really doesn't. I mean, I know what I ran for, but at the same time, this public service is in nature that holds immense value. And to secure a highly qualified, experienced individuals for these roles, it is imperative to pay them what they're worth. And we're going to find that today. In my opinion, a more balanced, professional-driven, diverse council is going to be more of enhanced government. Instead of just, all right, let's settle for less, let's make that decision today. So that's what I have to say about that.
Well, I tend to disagree with about all of you. You run to serve, you don't run to get paid, we get paid for that, we do. I think the money would even better well spent if people were running. I've always said, I don't get paid enough. That's why every year when insurance comes about, I still always say, the city takes care of the portion that the adjustment goes up. Yeah, I do agree, maybe an increase, but a modest increase. Because overall, we run, or I ran, to serve the city to the best of my abilities and the best of my knowledge. You ever had a job when you were in call? And even now, on salary at my place, I get called. I've been off since Tuesday because of my wife's medical procedure, still get called. It just comes with you. All our times are about it, you guys understand that? But if you ever consider in the afternoons when we have our meetings at 5:30, the same faces are here for no extra pay. So if we're going to get paid, then should they be compensated? Now, I think that's going to be the biggest difference. I think in trying to find a number that's suitable for everybody, we can give ourselves a pay rate. But at least not forget why we're here. If you decided to run and feel that you're running out of time for other activities or other social events or work, maybe this is not for us, but for me, for you. You know, there's been many a times that I've left the meeting because I have to go to work. Did not make meetings because I was at work. So, you know, I like the idea that Charles said, that caveat should be in. That if for some odd reason we hit a low, that pay needs to go back. And when Seth was here, we were close to laying off people. Thank God we didn't. And I made the statement then, just let the council give up their pay for a while. And I had some pushback. So, you know, don't forget why, why you ran, and why were you? It's a good thing you get paid, looking at this, some areas don't get paid. Some of our own governments, entities here other than us, don't get paid. So just keep that in mind.
I don't think anybody decided to get involved or, remember, we made the decision to get into public service. I don't think anybody did for the money or for the, the pay. It's because there was something in us that was calling us to serve our community. There's humility in choosing to be a public service, service person. I don't want to cry, I don't want to speak because I know it's going to get emotional, but it is what it is. If anybody thinks that anybody gets involved in public service is to feel important or to make money, it's wrong. I think I can agree with the rest of the council members and the mayor, not just this existing one, but previous ones. You're approached 24/7. You have calls, you have texts, and we all have personal responsibilities. But I think we knew when we, you know, submitted our name to be considered for the election. I feel that there's a, you have to be a humble person to be able to put yourself up on, I don't know what's the word that I'm looking for, not a pedestal, but for public scrutiny. But I think with that humility, we have to not only advocate for the growth and development of city staff development projects, we have to advocate for ourselves as well. And even though we're not doing it for the money, I still feel that we should be compensated fairly. You know, for 25 years, for there to not be any type of adjustment or increase, I think that's kind of sad. I do know that we are in a place economically that we have never been in. So we're navigating these new waters, and with higher budgets come more problems, more issues, more staff, more wear and tear on the streets and on our existing infrastructure. So bigger budgets mean more problems. But it also means more responsibility, you know? We have more meetings, more special meetings, and I, I feel that it's time to make some sort of adjustment, a fair adjustment, I don't know exactly what that figure is, but I do think that it's, I mean, it's, it's time and it's, it's important. Like I stated last week, it's not just for us, for the existing council, but for future council. And for, you know, it's, it shows, it's an investment, and it's, like, I think Hector mentioned that last week, that the voters voted us in with confidence. And I think that if they don't feel that we should be compensated more, then they'll let us know when it's time to vote. So I think we should come somewhere in the middle. Thank you for everybody that submitted this information. It was very interesting for me to see and read and look over the numbers. I'm not a numbers person like Randy, but it is very eye-opening to see the huge disparity that there is in our area, not just West Texas, but I think in all of Texas, when there's compensation for city council and other elected officials. I think, I don't know, I don't know exactly what that number is, but I do feel that it's time for us to advocate for ourselves. It's, it's time.
You know, can I piggyback off that real quick? She was, she's right. As a council, I feel like looking at something like this, you have to earn your pay. That was earned when you were knocking door to door day and night, trying to win a campaign, putting your name on the platform with all the scrutiny, people debating if you were going to be the right person for the job. We've earned that already, we're sitting at this table. I'm going to tell you a personal story, and it's going to relate to this city. I drove around for two hours yesterday with my brother that was born and raised here. And we drove from the east side to the north side, to the west side, to the schools. We saw the dirty town, we saw the dirty eighteen-wheelers parked, we saw the weeds, we saw everything that we know that needs attention in this community. But we need to now become a town, a council, that is ready to be bold and grow some teeth, to be willing to take a chance on ourselves without thinking about the scrutiny, what the public's going to say about us. But that actually gives a sense of caring when you get in on a Sunday, to know the town that you were born and raised, coming in from Barstow, to drive all around the streets of the neighborhood and say, why hasn't this been addressed? Why has this been sitting here 20 years and nobody's addressed that? That's a sense of caring. Hey, Karoska, what are you doing tomorrow on Wednesday? Actually, I have to be in New Mexico with two important meetings. Are you willing to sit down with the county commissioner and break bread and discuss possible ideas? I'm there. Are you willing to sit down with the Economic Development Board to fill in with all the projects? I'm there. Are you willing to be at the HOC in all these special meetings? I'm there. Yes, I sign up for it. I am blessed and honored to be in the position that I am financially, but at the same token, time is money. And if you want to motivate people in the future to actually get out there and care and look around and say, hey, that's what motivates, that's going to set the tone for the future. So regardless, at the end of the day, whatever happens today, the citizens are going to realize, you know what? They're taking a chance on themselves, they're willing to be bold to ask for that without any repercussions. And then, and we're all on the move. And I like to thank everybody for their time as directors to willing to see the future. But like I said, not to beat a dead dog, but the old times have changed. We're not jogging no more, we're going to start spreading some. So whoever wants to jump our board and not talk about the past no more, let's go. Thank you.
And I would say this, that our council, we have, we have a strong council. I'm proud to be here with a council. I think we have a strong leadership in our town today with the city manager and the staff that he has, he has put together around him. And it's, it's going to take And it's gonna take us to not just tell people what to do, but actually become doers ourselves of what we're trying to promote up here. Because this is a, this is a community of positive now. It's not about, it's not about look how bad that looks over there, how bad that looks over there. Let's start doing our part. Let's start, you know, working out there and helping them out and, and, you know, I talk, I talk to a lot of people during the day when I'm out, and they wanna know what's happening. What, why are y'all building that? How come this is happening? I said, well, it's the change that the town needed. The opportunity is here, and we gotta jump on it. And with the leadership, and I keep harking on the leadership, because it takes a good leader to set the tone, but it takes the people behind him that make the things happen. A leader can't do it by himself. It takes the people around him, underneath him, but his guidance, the ideas that come, come from a good head on, and then many heads together, man, we can make this town. Why is Milan Odessa, you know, talking about Pecos? I met with a gentleman that's a general manager for one of the big franchise restaurants in Odessa, and that man goes, what is happening in Pecos? I know. I've heard all about Pecos. What's happening there? It's booming, man. And to see it, and we have a council that, we don't agree on everything, council, mayor, we don't agree on everything, but we discuss, we can, we discuss business here, we go outside and it's like we weren't inside, because we're still friends. And that's the way it's supposed to be. I don't have bad feelings against anybody, and I don't. This town is about being positive. That's what it was back then. If we're gonna have this Pecos project, then let's start showing it. One thing is, is like Councilman Carrasco said, you drive around and you see all this dirty stuff, like, Jesus Christ, man, cars on top, and, you know, we're working on that. But it's what I said earlier. It was so laid back that they allowed things to happen, now we're trying to get it back. And man, those people got used to, oh, they won't say anything. Well, let me tell you, we are gonna say something. But in saying that, and it's not because we wanna be mean, it's because our town needs it. It's a beautiful town. I worked with a lot of contractors before I retired, and the worst, they, man, and I hated it, when they would tell me, man, this is a dirty town. And the first thing come out of my mouth, well, what are you here for? I've always said, people came into Pecos to prostitute this town, to take the money and then, but they don't live it. We wanna create an atmosphere where people wanna stay in Pecos, but it's gonna take all of us to work together, not just the council. We're just the ones that decided that we're gonna take the blunt of the negative that comes in there, to help the leadership not take it all. Because we're the ones with the decision, but you're the ones that have to face these people when they show up on your doorstep over here. But I'm proud to be here. I'm proud to be, I've been here six years now, and I hope I'm gonna be here a while longer as I can finish my term, because I wanna finish what we have started. And right now, if this town hasn't, they're complaining about what's happening in this town, wait in two, three years, what they're gonna see, and then they're gonna lie. Charles, City Manager and I were talking the other day, and we were talking about things that have, we brought in, we brought in the lights on Cedar Street. They were complaining, crying about those lights. They came to the council meeting, why, why, why? Now it's the greatest idea they ever had. Because people don't like change. But once they see it, man, they take it. And that's what we're given, is a change. But I think this council is awesome to me.
Can we, I think we talked, and everybody knows what they, so can we start throwing some numbers out?
Yeah, Mayor Council also has something else. Had a conversation, sidebar conversation, so I apologize. If council sees fit, there's other incentives that you can do. You can have a pay with a combination of something else. And right now, there's none, and I don't know if there's precedent or not, but the one thing that we do have in the city is we do run our own water, sewer, and trash service. So it could be something that is part of a pay incentive, you can say, okay, well, while you're in office, the city could go to those councils. It's gonna vary by every, depending on everybody's house. Doesn't have to be thought of, you can tell me you're crazy, but just throwing something else out there that you know some, you know, there's some form of benefit that you can incorporate into that, that wouldn't always be a dollar amount on there. And it could vary, everybody's house is gonna be different from a water uses trash or water and sewer usage. But if you wanted to throw something in there that was a combination of two, public park or we don't see anything that would prohibit that, so I'm just throwing something else out there for y'all to consider, now that we're, y'all have talked for a little bit.
And, okay, so last meeting, we voted for a tax increase, and then we voted that we were gonna start charging employees half their, the increase in their insurance. And so I think it's unwise for us to vote us ourselves in a huge raise, like $12,000 a year at this time. I think it needs to be something less than that. I think it needs to be something middle of the ground for us to have a starting point, and then build a percentage per year after that, dependent on budget constraints. I just don't know what that middle number would be, but something, it's not $12,000 a year.
Okay, right now, I'll just use an example. You get $2,100, right? If we were to go $220 a year, including special meetings, we can add that later. If we were to do that at two meetings a year, that's $2,880, that's a jump of $720. That's not bad. You can like, a council member would go from $1,200 to $1,020, that's a $720 increase a year. I think that's, to be fair, and not as, medium with the mayor's, we just raise some rates and this and that, and that's not, I know, for people who say, oh, y'all raise taxes and raise this and raise that to give yourselves a raise. Now, they won't listen to the 25 years of no, no raise, no increase. They won't, they'll blindside that one in an instant. I'll just look at numbers, making up my own numbers, and, you know, right now, as a council, it's what, 20 and 40? Go 80 and 60? Just a $20 increase.
You know, we're worried about a community, what they're always thinking. You know what this community, the majority of them really, really want, honestly, of being on the streets? They want a quality of life. They want a clean town. They want a swimming pool. They don't care about the new hospitals, and I'm gonna get to my point here. They don't care about the new schools, because they're paying that at the end of the day. They want active council members that they can go personally, address something without repeating themselves, to do the same thing over and over, and five months later, repeat themselves. And it's not about the money, but it's like, we're so afraid of the community things, but community really wants a down-to-earth, face-to-face council member that they can speak to and know what you're worth on top of that. But yet, we talk about budgets, but we budget all kinds of crazy things during council, which I have supported since being here, without being a rubber-stapping council, because I believe in the mission, so in order to help, which I'm gonna get off subject here, every department, I'm supporting your purchases right now because of the mission, but at the end of the day, we need to budget something in there for us, instead of us trying to earn it. You know, we take chances on million dollars, million-dollar equipment, but yet we're willing not to take a chance on us.
So what figures do you want?
I mean, 12 is not that bad. I mean, it really isn't. It's a start. And, you know, special meetings too, all these meetings we're gonna be going to in the future, RMA, I'm sure there's gonna be one appointed, ex officio, HFC meetings, who knows what other meetings we're gonna be part of. That's something that we need to commit to our nine-to-five operation to be there, and that's something I might wanna see, but...
Connor, what's your feeling?
When we started talking about this, you know, it's about, my thought was, and I shared it with you guys in the executive session, we're gonna give ourselves a raise, because we have to sell it to the community. They're the ones that are gonna say yea or nay. So, in that executive session here a couple weeks ago, I said, let's start low and then work it up, escalate it up, not go from here to, you know, a big step, because we want the community to support us on that, on this raise. It's never come, it hasn't come through in many years, so, like everybody else, I, we're not here to make a living off of the salary that the council makes, but everything that we're doing, the time that you put in, is something that we really need to take into consideration. And I still think the initial proposal, the 12, I don't think it's bad, but that's just my, my, I don't think it's bad, because it's a lot better than where we're at right now for what we're doing. I talk on a daily basis to different people, even when I'm playing kickball out there, I'm always talking to somebody, and they're talking about the city, about this and about that. Go to the gym in the mornings, same thing. Why are we doing it? When are we gonna fix this? How are we gonna do this? You know, so, so it's a, it's a, it's, and, I'm retired, so I have that luxury to be out in the community. Some of our council members, they're working. Councilman Rowena works out in the field, most of the time in the field, you know, you don't run into a lot of people. So, it's a different, but I believe we need to ease into it, and I kinda like what Charles, what the city manager just kinda offered, because I think that had come up in that meeting too, about a proposed benefit package, you know, not just the money, but what else, what other benefits will be? Can, you know, most of the companies, it's not the money that you make, it's what's a benefit, your insurance, what's 401, stuff like that. That's a benefit package that draws people into companies to work. I worked in a few for a long time, the money was great, but the benefits were a lot better.
So what's your figure? What figure do you want?
I think 12 would be fine, wouldn't you?
$10? What did Joe just say?
I think 12 is a good place to start, and then if we could somehow change the ordinance to where, if economic, if we're in good times, then we could have some wiggle room, but I think 12 is a good starting place. I think we should get something there, shouldn't we?
And these special meetings as well, something you might wanna look into as well, because, you know, hey, be at this HFC, be at this one, be at this one.
We have a lot going on. We do, there's no doubt, that we didn't have a year ago, there's, and we're gonna have more in the future with some of the things we're working on, that y'all have approved with the RMA and the NPA. That's why I threw out, and one reason that I threw out there, just pulling it out, is the water and sewer piece of it or something like that, that may be a benefit, is because everybody, all of y'all are gonna use that. Not everybody's gonna use insurance, okay? So that's why I hit it that way, because if you get, if you said, well, okay, we're gonna take care of two-thirds or three-quarters or 100% of the insurance, it's only gonna affect a few people, not everybody. That's why I threw the water sewer out there. It was intentional that way.
Mr. Grant, how about you? What are your thoughts?
I just want us to get more than Bambol gets.
More than that, huh?
Nothing going on here. They're getting, they're getting $4,200 a year. That $4,200 plus, six? That's mine.
Also, the proposed, the way it's written in the proposition two, it sets an initial amount, and if it goes as stated and if approved, would give the council to amend it in the future by ordinance, so you could always raise it or lower it as needed, moving forward if it passes that way.
The ordinance.
Or you can structure it to limit that, or however y'all up to it, but that's...
Really, it's killing, but we don't have to take it back to the voters.
That's how it's already written, and I don't know if y'all wanna make that its own proposition, to keep it linked in with the initial sum, but, I mean, it's up to however y'all do it.
So this proposition two is basically how we wanna, how we wanna, we won't have to come back to the voters again?
As it's stated, yes. It sets an initial amount and says that, as may be amended by ordinance in the future. You wouldn't need an election every time to change it, moving forward, if it goes as it's written now, you could change it in the future by ordinance.
Which is much more productive.
We have an expensive, putting in the election.
That's correct, yes, sir. Yeah, and I mean, there's always, I mean, as we all know, I mean, there's always going to be issues to where if, if your city manager and y'all got into some crazy thing, okay, well, you know what, council can make $100,000 a year, we would get in trouble, and our voters would crucify us, so we already know that. And so, I mean, there's constraints already right there. I mean, our objective is to serve the public and to serve all of our citizens equally, and make sure that we're being the best stewards of the taxpayer dollars. And there is a price for that, there's no doubt about it, but it doesn't mean that we don't need to continue to be good stewards that way.
I'd like to make a motion on that. Now, I don't know how to phrase this motion.
Well, the mayor, if we can help you.
I honestly think if we were to motion, I said 12,000, the mayor should get an extra more, because she has to be the face all throughout the community. She's gotta be at every ribbon cutting, she's gotta be at every PR event, right? So, right? So I know she's real sweet and all, and she probably doesn't want to, but she's gonna probably deserve a couple more than us, so, if you're okay with 15, I'd like to make a motion that the council start at 12, the mayor 15, and incorporate some kind of things with special meetings, and then maybe we were talking about some kind of incentives, either through health insurance. I don't know how to make that motion.
You just did.
You just made it. You just made it.
And I'll second.
I think Valerie got that one, maybe. I'll second. Okay, so we have a motion from Councilman Carrasco and Secretary of Councilman Correia to set the council pay at $12,000 a year, the mayor pay at $15,000 a year, plus any special pay, special meeting pay and incentives. Is that right?
And what rate are we gonna do on special meeting incentives? Or what incentives? We need to be kind of...
So the 12 is for regular meetings? Well, what's the breakdown for per meeting?
That's $500 a meeting. That's $500 a regular meeting. $12,000, you have 24 meetings a year, that's $500.
That's strange.
It'll be less, because we have all those special meetings.
Well, but they're talking about doing this as the base.
Oh, and then, so we don't have to put like a cap?
Yeah, I don't know.
Make it, how much per month?
That's $1,000.
That should cover every special meeting, every special event, every proclamation, every this, every that.
Or anything that we serve.
Take away the language, for special meetings, you get $40 for this, you get $20 for this. That's mine.
But do you wanna do the water sewer incentive? That's his, that's his motion.
Nope. Well, I'll, I'll...
It was...
It's a motion.
It wasn't the water, it was the insurance.
It was the insurance. It wasn't the water, it was the insurance.
Okay, insurance. Okay, so we have a motion for $12,000, council pay $15,000, mayor pay, plus insurance?
That's what it was just.
That's our motion.
So effectively, we need to approve the resolution as presented with the addition of insurance.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The record show the motion carries. The councilman and Rowena voting no. Is there anything else to be brought to the council? Okay, we've endured a long meeting, and it is 2:13.